Start with a roll call. Oh, remember those microphones. Okay, it'll just be me at the meeting.
Here.
Here.
Here, and if you do speak into a microphone, make sure the red light is on and you're awful close to the microphone or we will not hear you, TV land. Counselors, first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting June 18th, 2019. What's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Chalata.
Take a motion to approve those minutes of June 18th.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting June 18th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. President, members of the council. I submit to you the name of Angela Thatcher to serve as second term on the Community Fine Arts Center.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Counselor Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The next items I'm going to do together, seeing if everybody's okay with that. This would be the new Rock Springs Box Art Committee. All of these individuals I submit the names to, Mr. President, will be first term. And I submit the name of Peg Larson, Suzie Von Arons, Chris Chuning, Bernadine Kraft, Brianna Jackman, Darcy Punches, and Keaton West is our city council liaison. Counsel, we have Peg Larson, Suzie Von Arons, Chris Chuning, Bernadine Kraft, Brianna Jackman, Darcy Punches, to serve on a new committee called the Rock Springs Box Art Committee, all first term, with Keaton West as the liaison. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor West.
I'm staying.
Savage.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointments. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and thank you, Councilman West, for riding hard on that, taking another role as a-
We're getting closer.
Okay. I'm just gonna bring us to the presentations and proclamations section of our agenda. And I believe we have Dave Pendleton here, the AML consent process for exploration and grouting. Dave, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Dave Pendleton with Wyoming Abandon My Lands program. I'm the, replaced Bill Locke as the program manager. I have with me Jeff Mina, who was the project manager for the southwest Wyoming area. He's been, he's done a lot of work in Rock Springs, Superior Reliance, Uena County, Lincoln County. Jeff, you wanna come up here and join me?
(laughing)
Reason that we're here, wanting to visit with the council and the mayor is to seek your input and the input of the public on the process that we're looking at for being able to do work in areas we've never been able to do work before within the city of Rock Springs. We don't know what's going on in a lot of areas with the underground mines because we've never been able to go in there drilling because in the past, we've had what we call a hundred-foot rule. So if a landowner doesn't give consent for us to, or didn't give us consent to do a pre-inspection of their home before we went and did some work and got them insurance, they could effectively shut down an entire area from even getting us to go in and do some inspection of what's going on underground. So with the new process we're looking at, and I've got some handouts here that I can pass around to you folks. So we, as you know, the Abandon My Lands program works in the entire state of Wyoming. And Rock Springs has about 600 acres that are undermined. We have Lincoln County, Kemmer is undermined, Superior Reliance, Hannah, Glenrock, up around the Sheridan Gillette, I mean Sheridan and Buffalo area. We have highways and interstates that are undermined, and we've been doing a lot of work around various places throughout the, throughout the state of Wyoming for a long time. We, I think we first started with, I think it was Division of Mines or Mine Inspector. There was sand filling, water-sand mixture was the first filling of voids, and they didn't fill clear, fill the voids clear up. They just put a certain amount in, and when they hit that, they moved on to the next hole. So AML programs came along, they started putting grout down into the holes and started doing what they call pillar building. And that was supposed to support the roof. We found that doesn't work. There were problems with that. We still had subsidence features. And the program started to really start working on filling the voids with cementaceous grout, fly ash, sand, water, and a little bit of cement. And it's, you know, fill the voids and don't allow the stuff to rub away and come to the surface. And so with this new consent procedure, to round things back out, we weren't able to do a lot of work in a lot, a lot of areas of Rock Springs or even see what's there. And with this new consent procedure, we would like to go in and reexamine those areas or take a look at them for the first time and see what's going on, what the depth of the voids are, what the conditions are they are in, and what do we see coming to the surface? And do we need to go in there and actually do some work? Because that'll have a great effect on a lot of people if, if it's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. You're, you're talking about 150-foot lasts. It's just a matter of time. So when we go out, we would like to, what we'll do is get a hold of a potentially affected, affected interest in a, in a neighborhood, which are the people that live there, the businesses and so forth. And it'll be our consultants that go out and provide that first contact. And what we will do is it'll, it'll be probably a two-member team. We'll send out mailers and we'll come, make appointments, come and visit the people and discuss what it is we're looking for. The process that we would go through, dealing with drilling and so forth, and what we would do if we potentially found something underground that was really concerning. And so we would ask a two-member team to fill out a standard mine site information form with the landowner, discuss, discuss site-specific conditions, including mine maps and anything else, previous work that's been done in the area, and explain the AML consent process and provide appropriate consent forms. And then, so landowners, they have several options. They can deny consent, which in case, we would document the information on the form. They could provide consent for either ingress or egress, or reclamation is appropriate. Or they could request mine insurance, in which case AML would be notified, or AML would direct a third party to do some inspections and sign the landowner up for subsidence insurance.
Dave, let me ask you a question if you stop me at that point.
Okay.
You're saying within 100 feet of a building, if an individual denies your request to drill and grout on that area, that you would, you can still move over within 100 feet and grout underneath someone's building? That's the direction?
Go ahead.
Jeff meeting the project manager.
Jeff, you'll have to speak into that mic, sorry.
I had jaw surgery, so I'm still feeling bad. Jeff Mina, AML project manager since 2010 in the southwest Wyoming. We do 46,000 to 50,000 cubic yards a year out in the southwest in grouting. To answer your question, Mayor, we have a hundred-foot rule that I started when I came in in 2010 because I was concerned if we're on one property, we might have an issue on the next. What we want to do is draw a circle around, and then we would do, offer subsidence insurance to the, all the people that are in that area. The state of Wyoming would, at that point, pay for their insurance premium for the year, and that would cover them if there's any damage during the drilling investigative, or if during the grouting process, if we get to there. The problems we've had in the past and why we're bringing this new consent form forward is, some of the areas are the older areas in town, they're smaller lots, 50-foot plus wide. You capture a lot of homes. So if we're gonna drill in someone's backyard, we catch their neighbors behind them, we catch neighbors on the side, we can catch the neighbors across the street. One house could end up being eight. If one of the people say no, don't offer consent to go and inspect their house, we can't offer insurance, we can't drill and grout on that property. So that's why this new requirement we're trying to bring in so we can cover houses. So to answer the question, Mayor, is with the new consent, if one of the members says, "I'm not interested in you coming in and inspecting my house," they don't want us on the property, or in a lot of cases, we have houses that are bank-owned, are vacant, owner is living out of state and does not reply to any of the mailings we send to them, that still kills a project. So what we want to do is institute this. If one of the neighbors over here says no or doesn't respond, or there is no person that owns the house, then we're still able to go in and grout only the people, or drill and grout only the people that have granted us consent and access for, access to the property, and then we go back for consent for construction to grout if we find out we have a problem. So we can still take care of an individual homeowner. We just did it over on 821 Woodruff. A gentleman had knocked down a house, wanted to put up a new home. It was grouted back 20, 30 years ago with pillar grouting. We wanted to verify before he puts a new structure on property that he actually has stable ground. Because for us to go into the narrow properties, we can't grout in the backyards as easy. So we want to be able to offer the service to the residents of Rock Springs, also the facilities we have downtown, that we can actually do the work.
I guess where I was going. Jeff.
Yes, sir.
If I could, if you have 50-foot lots and you have one individual in the middle that does not allow you access to grout, obviously you can't control the grout underneath that residence. What happens if that individual doesn't sign up, doesn't allow access, doesn't sign up for insurance, and you grout either side and damage occurs to that building?
We will have to deal with that when it comes up, Mayor. We've ran through that scenario. So we look at the greater good. Does it make sense to, if someone's already having a problem on their property, their house is having failures, do we go in and grout that property and save that one versus everyone else? According to state law, we cannot take pictures of an existing house, you know, across the fence. Usually it's for ranchers and like that. But when you're in town, we have the same thing. We can't fly a drone overhead and take pictures of the area. We can't look over the fence and take pictures of houses without the person's consent. So we're looking at the greater good on it is, do we help one individual with his property, or even a city-owned building, or county-owned building, like across the street, or we don't do a project and someone suffers the consequence of subsidence possibly?
One thing we will do to help with that is put up surveying instruments to try to determine if there's any sort of movement. And soon as there's any, that's it.
In what laser?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We set up multiple lasers. The other thing we do on the houses that we're grouting around, we actually put an individual that we employ through our consultants with the homeowner's consent in the house or in the basement to make sure, A, we have no mine gas, if that's a concern. Also, if we're starting to move anything, they're in the basement, open and closing the doors. We have levels in the basement that'll sound off. So if we start seeing movement close to our grouting hole, then that would tell us that we're gonna have movement in other areas. The other part, which I kind of skipped over, is our engineering consultant has to do an assessment of the area. So say one of the eight says, "No," we do an assessment. Is it still engineering sound practice to go in and grout with the one individual saying no? Do we have to take other safeguards? And then we institute the safeguards on that. We want to make sure that we're very conscious of people's residences, their homes, their businesses, when we do our work.
Okay. Councilman Chalata, do you have some questions?
I have a few questions. You know, I know that this is for the great, great good community, but I've had a few citizens call me about the property down, Hogan and Hancock. Hancock, yes, you guys did some drilling there last year, did some grouting. Remember that? Yeah. And Hogan Street.
We didn't do drilling and grouting in Rock Springs last year, sir.
Did.
No, I've been up in Reliance putting about 30, 40 million in the ground.
So did you do any prior to that, maybe two years, I don't know, exact period of time. But these, these persons say that after, that they did some subsidence grouting, had problems with not subsidence, but heaving their basements, cracked their foundation, also heaved up the basement floor. I personally have been involved years ago, down on Center Street, West Center Street. I believe the company at the time was PCC or PCP, I don't exactly name it, but they were using the old style of slurry grouting, putting the pipe down and bring it up until it came out of the ground.
Same process we use today, sir.
Right. And, and I did get heaving, and so did some of my neighbors. But when I contacted the state, they, they didn't, at that time, didn't have anybody come around like this process that you're doing now. They didn't have anybody come to the homeowners and explain what was actually going on, provide insurance. This is a whole different animal that you're presenting to us, right? And I would hope the homeowners would be receptive to how this is, because in the past, it's been very, very poor as far as I'm concerned. So, yeah, reading over all of this, I think this is the proper way of doing this, contacting the proper owners, offering them insurance, letting you come in and videotape, you had to post our debris and the post effects, safeguard them. Thank you for your-
Thank you. I apologize. I believe you were about on number five, Dave. Sorry for that.
No, you're fine. So, yeah, I think we, I think I went down through that. There's three, three different options for the landowners. So once a project area is canvassed, seems complete, a consultant will make the recommendation to, to AML, which could include consents granted, proceed with the plan, consents denied by some, determine if adjusting the plan to minimize proximity to non-consent properties, while being protective of other interests of landowners in the area. If yes, proceed with modified plan on adjacent properties. If no, assess risk of no action, including adjacent properties, and recommended action slash no action. So then, AML will, we have this laid out in kind of a sheet here as to what the procedure would be, kind of a flow chart of sorts. So it all, it all boils down to whether we're going to go in and do some inspection, drilling and possible grouting, or, or not. And we would, you know, it's concerning to us that we would, most of the people would have, would, would be, you know, would like to have something done, and maybe one or two landowners don't want anything done, and just don't want you anywhere, like Jeff said, anywhere on your, on their property. And to condemn a whole neighborhood is not, not right as far as we're concerned.
So Dave, still the, the goal is to, you're not doing mitigation on undeveloped lands?
That's correct, unless there is a utility going across that land, then we would consider doing some work under that utility to prevent it from subsidence.
So then, the millions that were dumped into Reliance, was, was that developed land, Jeff? Maybe that's your-
It was developed land. It was under people's homes and utilities.
We just understand this is not a never-ending pool of money, just to get the best bang for our buck, to make sure that it's being utilized to where it was designated to be utilized, developed lands, utilities and the like.
Part of this, Mayor, is if we take a city street that has water, sewer, power, right down the line, if the adjacent homeowners say no on grouting, or no on access to their property, then we're not able to protect your facilities in town. And we had that happen over here just south of the city hall here. So it kind of ties our hands where we can't even protect your assets, you know, that support the city and support those residents when the residents don't respond. And it's either vacant, as I mentioned before, or people who just don't want you to come in their house for whatever reason, which I completely understand. Sometimes I don't want people in my house. So we're trying to do the better for everyone. And we have considerations. If we have issues, then we're gonna have to bring it up to that community, have a town hall type of meeting, explain what we're doing if there's a lot of pushback on it. We did that in Reliance. We're on our fifth phase out in Reliance grouting right now. And that's kind of an interesting job up there, and we just found some more issues.
It would be hoovesaw if you could find some mine subsidence west of our sewer plant, and maybe it would fall in and you could bury it, cover it, grout.
We wouldn't have to fall in.
That would be helpful.
We could drill a hole out there and verify that there might be mine workings out there. And we do offer that service, just so everyone understands that when a resident in Rock Springs calls up and says, "I've got a hole in my yard, I've got a problem, I've got a, a small depression," we have consultants that go out to that residence. We look at it. What we normally find is they have a cistern in their yard that the ground finally gave away because someone put wood across it, rotted out, and it'll either be a septic type of tank, or it'll be a water type. And that's a concern. We help that homeowner get that corrected. We have engineers that look at it because we want to know if there's mine workings. Because if there's a problem, we don't want to have issues with someone falling into a hole, or a homeowner being concerned about their, their house is gonna be destroyed by a subsidence issue. So we do offer that service within your town and all the other towns that we work in.
Perfect. But I, just to speak to that, I just had a client recently who had a partial parking lot. And I know AML was out there right away. They looked at it at the Pink Center Plaza, but they were really happy with the process and the speed they're going on. Go out there, find out the problem. They do work pretty quickly.
We try to be there as soon as they call. We get calls from Paul, the city engineer, or Ryan, his other engineer, saying, "This person called, it's an issue, go look at it." We have the same thing with utilities, because we're very concerned if utilities are gonna get subsidence around, that'll affect a whole portion of town. So we'll go out and look at the utilities, make sure it's ours, or it's the utility, someone didn't compact it correctly, and then we help them through the process. We have limits on what we can do, but we try to do the best to protect the assets of the town.
I believe on Powerhouse Drive, we had an issue where we, we did contact you in the parking lot on that plaza in the back is once again caved in and subsiding. And we were denied assistance, but directly across the street, the same issue was taking place, and you did mitigate that. So I'm a little concerned on how that worked.
I'm not real familiar with the streets over here. I, I know Presidential and Tree Streets. I'm out of Cheyenne. Is that over by the laundromat over on the east side?
It is, behind that whole backside. I'm sure Rob's familiar with it.
What we ended up doing was, the property owner over there had a subsidence hole start in the parking lot, right where the entrances off the street, across from the laundromat and the Pizza Hut on the east side. What we did is we set it up, had our contractor under, contractor ready. We had to move over there and drill. And what we found out is the 810 power plant that used to exist there a long time ago, they actually knocked all of the foundations and the concrete slabs down into what used to be the basements, which is flooded because of the high water table, put dirt over the top, put paving over the top. We went in to drill it to see, because we've been looking for a shaft over there. Jim King from JFC's been, was helping me look for that seven, eight years ago, and we finally located it last year. We thought it was more to the south. It's over there by, off of the little park. We finally located that one. So we went in with that homeowner, and that's just what the power plant did with their foundations. We didn't find any mine workings in that area.
So is that, if mitigatable is the word, is that mitigatable?
It's not under, it's not undermined. So it's not something I can go mitigate. But if a homeowner calls us up saying, "I have a whole subsidence, a concern, I'm getting cracks in my house, and it looks like it's within a mined area," we have the maps mostly for the area, then what we'll do with approval of Dave is I'll send a drill team out there, we'll look at it, and then if we can, we'll get the consents, which is what we're here today to talk about. And then we'll drill it, and then we'll make a report out. And if it's city property, we give it to the city. If it's the homeowner, we give it to the homeowner. But we're able to respond pretty quickly if I have a driller within, you know, 50 to 100 miles of here, which I try to keep one accessible because we keep on having issues. So if any of your constituents have concerns, Western Engineering Geologist, Rob Gerard here, is one of the consultants for the AML program. People can call him direct, they can call AML and Lander for Dave. They can call myself, or BRS is our other consultant. We are here to help. With the new consent process, we're trying to streamline it and make it easier for everyone to be able to have their property looked at, grouted if it needs grouted, or just a determination that there's no problems down there. We drill a hole, depends on the mine workings, 200 to 400 feet. We know we have seams, multiple seams that are mined. We'll actually drill down deeper to make sure we find it. If we don't find it, or if we find intact coal, we might move over to drill a hole to see if we have a room or a haulage weight. We want to verify it. Because I'm a licensed engineer, when we walk out of there, we want to say, "Hey, we're pretty confident that we don't have an issue," or "We've got an issue, we want to be able to tackle it, we put it on a priority list."
So just to be clear, if, if an individual calls has a subsidence hole, they fill out the consent form, maybe purchase the insurance, and exploratory, go ahead.
We pay for the insurance. If, if you call us out and you want us to come on your property, AML will pay for-
Pay for the insurance.
-one year of insurance, sir.
So the exploratory team would come in, drill, take a look at what they feel it is, who pays that bill?
AML does.
Okay.
The homeowner- The homeowner, business owner, they don't pay anything on any of the adventure that we do.
Okay. And then if they, seeing the case of Powerhouse, a foundation, you're determined that that is a foundation, not a undermining, that's not something that AML would repair?
Correct. Now, the reason we repaired that area over there that was subsided, we put a drill rig on top of it and dropped the drill rig right through it. So it was, it's completely saturated underneath. It's a flooded area over there. We drilled through concrete slabs, drilled through foundations, but when they started drilling, we dropped his outriggers through, we dropped his rear tires through. So that's why we ended up putting a 20 by 30 patch out in that area because we ruined it, we paid for it. I'm an old Boy Scout, Eagle Scout. I like to leave things better than I found them, especially when we go to homeowners' places, you know, they're looking for help and we try to help them the best that we can. We have a good track of records so far and I like to keep it that way.
Counselors, any questions?
Please let us know if you run into people going in and want to inspect. On an insurance standpoint, I do, I know I've got insurance companies that send out third parties to inspect homes. So it'd be interesting to see how, what kind of feedback you get when it starts. Okay.
That's a good idea. We only use two inspection agencies. They're both consultants for the AML program. One is Western Engineers and Geologists. The other one is Ken Wilbert Engineering. Both of those are Rock Springs residents. They know the people, they go to church with them, you know, they go to the council meetings. We use local people because they see them. They also are part of this community. With the insurance program, if the homeowner has an issue, like you mentioned, counselor, if you had an issue with us drilling, the homeowner tells us right away. The inspection team goes backs in, looks at the old picture, looks at the crack on the wall or the settlement or the door doesn't swing open, and then we start the process of how to correct that. And we deal that with the owner.
If it's a result of something we've done, we pay for it.
Just one more issue on it. Mayor, if I may, we have a building across the street, the health building. We continue to look at it because this is an undermined area, kind of to the west of us over here by the old post office and the old bank, which the health building is now. If a hole opens up because it's springtime, you get the rain, they turn the sprinklers on, might have a broken pipe, we go back and we keep on looking at properties. So we might grout it one year, but I'm still looking at properties I grouted 10 years ago to make sure nothing else comes up because we're kind of the eyes and ears. If we see something, then we'll go back to the owner and say, "Can we look at your property? We think we have an issue that might be creeping up." And usually we're granted access.
You know, we try to do confirmation drilling in a lot of locations after we do our work to try to make sure we don't leave any voids, but you know, years and years of moisture going through the ground, you can cause subsidence if there's any down there to be had.
What is AML's budget? I mean, surely this is, obviously, is it what, 25 cents a ton of coal is where your budget's generated?
So it's 28 cents per ton, yes. And it's, Wyoming produces roughly half of the nation's coal, so we get approximately half of what that total AML or total tax throughout the United States is.
So?
So we're, years going down the road, we're looking at that revenue source dropping. And the program is supposed to sunset in 2021 with a final payment of 2022 unless Congress reauthorizes that.
Yeah, every day we see coal being beat up and reduced and that's surely not going to help your budget by any means.
So we're looking at that revenue source for the entire state next cycle, dropping between, to between 30, 35 million.
Your Honor?
Mayor, when I started the program, we were doing one or two projects a year. This year I'm doing eight projects, drilling, drilling and grouting, so.
Throughout the state?
No, throughout the southwest area that I manage.
Oh.
And we have seven project managers right now, working throughout the state. We have bid projects, a little over $35 million right now, and then we have other projects that are, you know, smaller in nature that we have statewide contractors handling that are probably another five to eight million dollars. And then we have, you know, consultants working on designs and so forth.
Councilman Wender.
Yes, I believe you stated that you're in stage five out in Reliance. I was just wondering if you have a rough estimate as to the percentage of participation that you have had in that area?
100%. The one, and the bad thing about working out in Reliance, there's a lady who lives on the corner that keeps on making pies and cakes and cupcakes for our workers out there and they're getting larger on me. I notice it kind of slows down midday because she shows up with dessert and things stop, so. The same lady, we also, she had an incident out there and she collapsed in one of the curbs and our guys found her in the morning and made sure she got safely back to her house. So we're part of the community, you know, we're drilling next to your house or we're grouting next to your house. We try to do the best job we can do.
With the least amount of disruption.
We understand shift work for the people that work in the plants out here in the mines and we try to be very accommodating too.
Thank you.
One other question that I had, first off, what about your risk map update? Dave and I talked about this. Does that, doesn't seem like we've had one for 2000, what?
Six.
Six?
It is actually updated every year when I finish my projects. We do a, we have a risk subsidence map. It's green, yellow, red. We're working on the red and the yellows. We actually update it every year for the projects that we've completed. And we're, through a drilling program right now, we're reassessing some of those areas to see if they need to grow or they need to shrink. And that is a item for discussion if we're republishing the map that's on our table right now to see how that one's going to go back out.
Paul, do we, do we have an updated map? Very recent?
Our last map is.
So it's, the 2006 map is the updated map?
We keep, we keep on updating it ourselves. We have not issued a new update to it. We're doing a lot of the infills back in Rock Springs where in prior, people didn't want us to go in and grout, so we've caught those houses up. We picked up all the old Questar, which is the Dominion Yard. We're looking at going back down in that area again. They're having a little bit more issues that they want us to look at. So we're going back in and cleaning up some areas that people wouldn't allow us into. And then Reliance happened and then we're, this year coming back into Rock Springs up by what used to be Macy's is now Floyd's, Willie Boogers, Eddie's Truck Stop or Eddie's Truck Repair. We're up there drilling between that and the Verizon Tower. I call it the North Belt Route, Stagecoach Drive, I believe it is. And we're up there doing that one and then we're going to work back into town and pick up some more areas.
When could we expect then an updated map? When would you reissue that map based on your project?
Well, we would like to do additional drilling program down in this area. Once we get public comment, we'd put that out for better, just add it to our existing contract. And based upon that, then we would take that information and update, be able to update it and provide everybody with an updated map.
Dave, did you have anything else?
No.
We appreciate your time. And I think we did discuss, I think in the past, Mr. Kausic kind of been left out of the communications, but he's your man. Anything AML related would go through Mr. Kausic.
He's our first contact.
And counselors, any questions? Thank you for your time and for coming down. Good information and hopefully we'll get everybody to participate and follow the new procedures and make sure that we mitigate Rock Springs.
If you have any questions or comments, please get them to us and we'll take a look at them and see if we need to consider making any changes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant. Devin Brubaker, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport Director, of which we will be taking action under Resolution 2019-100. Welcome, Mr. Brubaker.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors. Keeping my hands in my pockets as Billy has asked and not asking for money, coming with good news that we have been awarded a $5,075,000 grant from the FAA to cover 93.75% of the cost of a $5.432 million airfield rehab project. That will include the following elements: the rehabilitation of Taxway Alpha, lower sections of Taxway Alpha to meet FAA design standards, extend Taxway Echo to Taxway Delta, remove Taxway Bravo entirely, rehabilitate Taxway lighting, including the replacement of 322 incandescent lights to LED, replace airfield lighting, constant current regulators, controls and home run cables, install counterpoise wiring on Taxway Alpha for lightning protection, replace all 85 airfield lighted signs, replace and relocate the airport's rotating beacon. This project will include 14,000 tons of asphalt, as I said previously, 322 lights, 85 signs and 90,000 linear feet of cabling. So it is a very big project. In fact, it is the third largest project in the airport's 77-year history, except for the initial construction of the airport. The largest project was about seven, eight years ago when Taxway Foxtrot and Delta were built. And the third, or the second largest project was the construction of the current runway 927 back in the 70s. So a very large project and we're excited to have received this funding. It's been about three years in design. We've been working on the project and advocating for the funding. This is the third time, I believe, in the last nine years where our airport has been selected for discretionary funding, which is highly competitive and it's very unheard of for small airports like ours to get it that many times in a decade. So we're hoping for a fourth time here in the very near future for the terminal project. But outside of that, I don't have any new updates on that project at this time. But that's this project. It's already been out to bid. The contract's been awarded to Kilgore Companies, doing business as Lewis and Lewis. There is approximately $1.4, $1.5 million of electrical work with this project and that work is being subbed out to Castle Rock Electric in Green River. So a large portion of this funding is going to stay local in our community. So bringing this kind of federal money in is something we're really excited about. The economic impact to our community is extreme, so we're excited for that. Trying to think of anything else that I was, I probably should tell you about the local match. That's probably the next question I would get. So I mentioned 93.75 is covered by the FAA. 3.75 or $203,000 is covered by YDOT as part of their matching grant. And then the remaining 2.5%, which is $136,000, is covered by airport budget, which was included in our fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 budget requests to the city and to the county. So $136,000 local on a $5.4 million project. So we're pretty excited to have this project happen. It'll be starting, if you guys say yes, tonight, within the next 14 days.
Well, unless you give a donation to International, Dave. See Mr. Tate. No, that's exciting and I'd like to see those numbers staying local. That's great, great job and by all means, great project for the airport. Devin, can't say how important that is to grow that airport as we well know. Counselors, any questions?
I got.
Councilman Waddings?
Curious with the construction, flat impact aircraft scheduling.
I sure as heck hope not. It's our busiest time of the year. We have plans in place. We spent, as I said, three years designing this project and really hot and heavy over the last year, really working hard to look at all of the, the FAA requires us to do so many different levels of risk analysis and safety planning on any type of airfield project. And this one, because it's coming during our busiest time of the year, and depending when Lewis and Lewis starts, starting July 13th here in 11 days, we start the three busiest weeks of the year for us with Oshkosh, when we have upwards of over 400 aircraft that come visit us on their way to Oshkosh, Wisconsin for the world's largest flying. So we're going to be slam busy starting July 13th through about August 3rd, pumping up to 40, 45 aircraft a day through the airport. So we're going to have to manage that traffic flow with the construction and we've been in continuous dialogue with Lewis and Lewis on that.
That's great. It's good to be busy.
Yes.
Any other questions, counselors? Good job, Devin. Thanks for coming down and shedding some light on where you are and where we're going and we'll be taking action on that here shortly.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, if it is approved, I have documents that will need to be signed tonight by you and the city attorney, so I can get these back to the FAA tomorrow. And I will be back July 16th, I think, is your next meeting. If you guys are willing to put me on the agenda to talk about air service and probably terminal, if we decide to move forward with some ideas at our board meeting, so.
Sounds good. I believe Kristen has taken some notes and she'll have you down.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And this is going to lead us into the petition section of our agenda and I would ask, is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak or address the council on any issue whatsoever? This is your time to do so. Hello?
So I am here as a representative of the newly appointed Rock Springs Box Art Committee and I'm here on behalf of all of the committee who, I'm the only one in town. But we wanted to express our gratitude for all of your support, hard work, patience. We just so appreciate everything you've done, particularly Councilman West for helping us. I didn't know what an MOU was, now I do. And that is because of all of his work with that. Ron Wild also was very helpful. But we really have turned this little dream we had as a committee into a reality with your help and we want you to know how much we appreciate that. We are really blessed to live in a community that supports grassroots efforts and public art and that is because we have representatives like yourselves. So thank you. The last thing I wanted to say was that our first box will be decorated in the college parking lot. It should be up this summer. Local artist Rose Klein created a stunning piece related to coal. It's beautiful. And so that big green box in the college will have the wrap soon-ish. I know that she spoke with the vinyl guy and gave him her piece and so please be looking for that. And just again, thank you. We really, really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you coming down and offering that. We don't get a lot of thanks. We get a lot of hate, but that's what we're here for and it's always nice to see good things come to the community and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the artwork.
We're really excited as well. We're not sure, there's weather, there's some temperature issues with wrapping the vinyls, so we may only get the one box done this summer, but by next summer, we're open for three, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Any issue? Hearing none, I'm going to close the petition section of our agenda and we're going to move on to council committee and board reports. And item number one, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of April 11th, 2019. Counselors, I'd entertain a motion to place these minutes, approve and place on our, on file.
Your Honor?
Councilman Wender?
Before I make that motion, I would like to remind everybody that we have a lot of company coming to town next week. And I know we had citywide cleanup just a few weeks ago in May, but when you think about it, if you're out walking your dog or your cat or your spouse or whatever, just bring along a little bag. I know I did it last night. I got a bag of garbage and an old lawn chair. So if anybody's missing a lawn chair, it's now in my dumpster at home. But you know, just let's try and, you know, if you're a business owner, go out, sweep the sidewalk, wash your windows, check the gutter, make sure there's no garbage in there. Let's just try to make it look as nice as possible. When everyone starts arriving, well, probably the first part of next week and definitely next Thursday, the contestants will start arriving. So with that, I move to approve the council committee and board reports.
We do have a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting minutes of April 11th. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Seconds been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you, Glennies, for that. I would ask, are there any other council committee or board reports due at this time?
Your Honor?
Councilman West? Councilman West?
Just like to, speaking of a lot of people coming to town, had a pile of emails and phone calls and complaints relative to smell going around through town, and particularly the wastewater treatment plant. And up until recently, I think, myself for sure, but a lot of the general public has been somewhat misinformed on some of these six-scent initiatives and trying to get rid of the stench that continues summer by summer. And I wasn't aware of the different technologies that were being introduced with these, and I, there've been talks of what can we do now, and what's needed next to get rid of this issue, and it, it all points to the six cents. So, I just think it'd be important for us to kind of highlight what these previous six-cent projects were geared towards, and why perhaps they weren't geared towards fixing the smell throughout town, and what we can do in the, in the immediate, I guess, present times to try and eliminate some of this issue. We've got big events like, you know, the Tiffany Legro coming to town, which is another hot item in our agenda, you know, the rodeo that's coming in, and that's the first impression that we get. So, we're trying to promote economic development, yet the town smells like crap, literally. And so, you know, I've had some discussion with, with Paul, and I didn't understand that the first six cent was for a cannibal, or cannibal reduction technology, and some different things that were trying to be introduced out there for different processes, that sounded like that turned in more of a cannonball effect rather than a cannibal effect, was somewhat of a wasted effort because our intake was larger than our capacity. And so, the second six cent was to increase capacity and take it from a, I believe, an anaerobic to an aerobic type of system. You know, but the biggest issue is the winter time, and that freezing, and now that its temperature's warming up, we're trying to, I guess, till it, and that's where we're getting the stench from. So, I don't know if there are other options, but I would certainly think that there are. We can't be the only community dealing with this issue, and I've had a lot of questions about Green River, and why are they so different, and obviously, that's a different system over there with their lagoon style. But, I think it would be advantageous of us and proactive of us, rather than reactive, to finally do something about it. Even if we, if this does go to a six cent, we're talking years before some type of a enclosed facility with, you know, ventilation scrubbers, or whatever the case may be, could be put into place. So, I just wanted to bring that up, because it's an issue that I think that's somewhat of a disservice to the community.
Councilman, I couldn't agree more. I, I think we've all been inundated with emails, phone calls, hate mail, over the last several months. But, as you well stated, if it is, in fact, something that's going to be placed on the specific purpose tax ballot, there's no guarantee that it would be approved. You would think it would sell itself, but it's by all means, time to address the situation and move forward, of which is the plan of Mr. Kausic, myself, and this whole council, I'm sure. With that being said, we know there's several projects coming forward, and why I feel it's very important that the committee get together and start to discuss how these projects are going to be placed on the ballot, our presentation to the county commissioners, and then start the campaign down that trail. That being said, if we had that money tomorrow, and I believe you did state that, it would take some time to construct that facility and get it up and working, so we'd have a whole nother winter. And winter is the issue with the stench, because the sludge basically builds up a crust. Early spring and summer, that crust is then broken, and the piles are start, started to be worked so they can be dried, so that we can meet the 50% solid to be transported to the landfill. We can't haul it in its liquid form. That being said, that's where we are, so there's two options. Please, voters, support your six penny tax if it comes before you. The other option's not so glamorous, and that would be, don't flush your toilet, because (laugh) it is exactly what it is, and we're dealing with it. There was at one time when the sewer plant was, Mr. Shalata, Councilman Shalata, and I had this discussion, the sewer plant was located basically where the animal control shelter was, in the middle of town, and then it was relocated, was outside of town at that time, and is no longer outside of town. The, the bad thing with the city of Rock Springs is we do not have land that's located out on the outskirts of our corporate city limits that we own, that we could take it outside of town and dry, so that sludge is then put on drying slabs at the facility until it reaches its 50%. The city of Cheyenne, other large communities have land outside that they do take that material out, and they dry it, they work it, and it's not so abrasive to the community. So, I am also looking at some options outside of town by private landholders that that may gain us some time until we can see a facility constructed and, and move into that direction. So, we'll keep everybody up to speed, but unless you have something additional, Paul, you wanna add, I'm sure you get tired of talking about this, but it, it is being addressed.
Oh, Your Honor, um, you know, I don't have a lot to add. At least water first, or hard as they can, dry it as fast as they can. Weather hasn't. (inaudible). Finally, it's getting hot. And, so, we are making progress. As patient, our hot hours. As. And we do have deal, long-term. We don't have to deal.
Thanks, Mr. Counselors.
Uh, a question. As we had talked about this before, in the construction of the building, dry, and the possibility of using six cent overrun for those who are part of that council of about 68. So, what's the cost? I mean, I know a ballpark for like, a building like that that would accommodate what?
You know, I don't have an exact cost. We were looking at any.
I was thinking four to five, but I couldn't.
Yeah, it was three and a half.
And I think, really, you gotta think about a building, enclosing the buildings one thing, but then the ventilation system that goes inside at the scrubber system, so it can not only emit cleaner air, but during the winter months, we also have to, the issue is, is, is preventing the material from freezing, so it'd have to be heated during the winter months. Mr. Kausic and the Solid Ways crew basically threw a, had tarped it up and used heaters over the last year to basically keep it from freezing, and then, on a good day, pull the tarps off and work it, so it would, it would dry as fast as it possibly could, because, like I said, early spring, when the thaw's done and they break it open, the crust, what's in the middle isn't so glamorous, and that's what you're seeing. So, the biggest thing is to make sure that if you're, you are given a question or ridiculed over that, to, to feed the community the right information. It's, it's not something that we should be bashing the, the workers of the process out there. It is what it is. Every city deals with it. Ours just happens to be located, one, upwind from the community, but the second thing, somewhat adjacent to what we've built out. It is an issue. We, we're well aware of it, and we are looking at a fix. Councilman Shalata?
Are there any grants available to help us? Love, like, state?
Uh, Your Honor, Councilman Shalata, the only grant that I am aware of at this point, the AML public. That one would probably put a...
Your Honor? Councilman West?
I feel like my words may have got twisted there. This wasn't a shot at any employees that are working out of the facility. I realize that they're working hard, and I feel bad for them for having to deal with this crap, literally. But, I, I realize there's limited resources. My main concern was, if we're talking another six cent, the community out there feels like they've already approved two six cents to improve this, then they're misinformed. And we, we've been very fortunate over the years to have their support on different infrastructure projects throughout the community. So, that was my point, aside from what can we do now to fix the situation, is, you know, I think the public's misinformed, and I think it's our job to be transparent and inform them on what those projects were. This is nothing to do, a shot at any employees out there facility. So, just wanted to be clear on that.
You make your point, Councilman West. First off, that wasn't pointed towards you, but I see in the community, especially those people on social media, that may not be informed, that, that may be working in the, the more public sector, not being as aware of what's going on as we are, and making some comments that aren't so glamorous and leading individuals in the wrong direction. So, I, I appreciate your comments, but that, that wasn't pointed towards you. I believe we're all aware, including the staff, of what, what the issue is, what we're trying to do, and how we can fix it, and it's top on our priority. We did just have a discussion about, it would be nice to be considering six penny tax projects that are much more glamorous, but we get a bear creek, a broken down building, and a smell from the sewer plant. So, so, I'm thinking, over the years that we've been dealing with this, that if it does become a six penny tax project for the city of Rock Springs, which usually includes what we've always dealt with as infrastructure needs, it should sell itself fairly, fairly well. We're not seeking projects that are out of line, in my own opinion. It's how to better the quality of life on a daily basis for our community. So, with that, any other comments, Counselors? Any other council committee or board reports? Okay, we're gonna move on to correspondence, Counselors, of which we have none at this time. And just a point of order before moving to our bills and claims, I would like to ask that we take action on Resolution 2019-101, prior to the bills and claims, as it's included, and Resolution 2019-06, prior to new business, as these items need to be addressed before we get there. So, with that, if I could, Alex, Resolution 2019, well, first off, can I have a motion to move out of order?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll sway off the agenda and then move to Resolution 2019-101.
Resolution, accepting and approving a service agreement between the city of Rock Springs and the Ray LaVado Recycling Center, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-101.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-101. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
Counselor Shalata?
Yes.
Sadi?
Yes.
Themis?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Uh, yes. Resolution 2019-106.
A resolution accepting and approving a job description for the position of career service specialist at pay grade 46 for the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Halter?
Yes.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-106. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. Roll call.
Counselor Shalata?
Yes.
Sadi?
No.
Themis?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Okay, we're going to get back to our bills and claims section of our agenda. Item number one, the bills and claims for June 30th, 2019.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendell?
I move to approve the bills and claims for June 30th, 2019.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for June 30th, 2019. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show, no opposed. That's gonna bring us to the bills and claims for July 2nd, 2019.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendell?
I move to approve the bills and claims for July 2nd, 2019.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for July 2nd, 2019. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number three, the salaries for June 21st, 2019.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for June 21st, 2019.
Councilwoman Wendell?
(laughing)
Uh, we do have a motion to approve the salaries for June 21st, 2019. Is there a second?
I'll second, but you don't mess with any trash (laugh) when you're talking trash and salaries.
That's right. Uh, we do have a second with discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Let the record show. This is gonna bring us to the new business section of our agenda. Item number one, request from the Parks and Rec Department for permission to fill a vacant senior rec supervisor position at the Ice Arena. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Tate?
Move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number two, the request from the Police Department for permission to fill a vacant career service specialist position that we just acted on. What's your pleasure? Councilman Halter? We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Oh, no. I guess there is, yes.
Opposed, no?
I'm opposed.
(laughing) Okay. Number three, the request from the city attorney's office for permission to fill a vacant assistant city attorney position. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Shalata?
Approve this request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number four, the request from the Parks and Rec Department for permission to accept a Rocky Mountain Power and Wyoming State Forestry Division grant in the amount of $500. Counselman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And I just would like to commend Mark Lyon, Dave Lansing, for working on this. Mark did a great job and, and did the footwork on this, so kudos to him. Item number five, the request from Good Times Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Whister Chevrolet Head Turner's Car Show on July 20th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 2200 Foothill Boulevard in Rock Springs. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendell?
I move to approve that request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Number six, request from the Ponderosa Bar for a liquor catering permit for the Soulay Rita Wedding on July 13th, 2019, from 3:00 p.m. to midnight at the Bunning Hall. Counselman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Tate?
Move to approve that request.
Do we have a motion to honor this request? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, request from International Days for two malt beverage permits for International Day on July 12th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and July 13th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Bunning Park. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Shalata?
Approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, and Councilman Tate's buying. Do we have a second?
Second.
For him buying.
Second for him buying. Who made the motion to approve? You?
Second.
Yeah. You got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Abstain.
Let the record show. This is going to bring us to our resolution section of our agenda, councilors. Resolution 2019-97.
A resolution accepting and approving an addendum to the collective bargaining agreement with the International Union of United Mine Workers of America, U M W A, and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said addendum on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-97.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-9. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate, yes. Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number two, Resolution 2019-98.
A resolution accepting and approving a service agreement with Sweetwater County Transit Authority, STAR, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-98, STAR.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-98. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus.
Abstain.
Tate, yes. Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number three, Resolution 2019-99.
A resolution accepting and approving a revised cooperative agreement between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, city of Green River, Wyoming, Sweetwater County, Wyoming Joint Power Waters Board, J P W D, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-99.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-99. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2019-100.
A resolution accepting and approving a grant agreement between the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport Board and the Federal Aviation Administration, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
I feel there should be a drum roll. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-100.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-100. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. With that, item number six, Resolution 2019-102.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs and the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as the mayor, as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, I don't know about this. Rick's a little sketchy.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution 2019-102.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-102 because Rick is a good guy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2019-103.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding fiscal year 19-20 regarding funding and support of the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-103.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-103. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called. Roll call.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate, yes. Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2019-104.
A resolution accepting and approving a service agreement between the city of Rock Springs and the Rock Springs Young at Heart, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-104, or Young at Heart.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-104. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate, yes. Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2019-105.
A resolution accepting and approving an employee assistance program agreement between the city of Rock Springs and Dr. Jerry Post, P.C., in the amount of $3,570, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve 2019-105.
We have a motion to approve 2019-105. Do we have a second?
Second.
Would you have a second? Roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Yeah, yeah.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah.
Just got wrapped up.
I was just telling Counselor Shalata, he was, he could be eligible to use...